The regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community School Board of Education is now brought to order on Monday, March 13th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome everyone. Your attendance to this evening reflects an interest in local education and is greatly appreciated. We're supposed to have two students from Adams Upper Elementary School, but it looks like we just have Vinnie Tormina. If you can come up to the front. And we're going to do 226.17, Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, Vinnie. Can you please stand there for one second? We have trustee Cox that's going to present your award.
Hold on, she's going to read his bio first.
My name is Vinnie Tormina, and I am in Ms. Reynolds' 5th grade class at Adams Upper Elementary School. I like to work hard with the hope to be able to make a difference in the world someday. I have a large family and a lot of cousins, but only one brother. I have two dogs, Willie, a Shih Tzu poodle, a Maverick, a cocker spaniel poodle. I have played baseball my whole life, and I'm pretty good at it. When I get older, I would like to attend Michigan State University and study to become a veterinarian or a doctor, but always go blue. So we have trustee David Cox who's going to present the award for presentation.
Vincent, it's my honor to thank you for coming tonight and leading the board in the Pledge of Allegiance. I hope that every time from now on, you say the Pledge of Allegiance, you remember this night that you led the Board of Education in your school district. To commemorate that, we have a certificate to you for participation. We hope, and also we're going to take a photograph in just a moment. So, thank you very much. Did you bring anybody with you tonight?
My...
Thank you very much.
And anybody else, like potentially a school leader?
Vinnie, yeah.
Thank you for coming today. Moving on to item number 238.17, roll call. On Ms. Hines?
Present. Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Present.
Ms. Madell?
I'm here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
And Ms. Madison is excused.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. So, we have two things we need to do. I would like to amend the agenda for three items. So the first one will be resolved at the Board. Amend the agenda as follows, to add item 242.17.1, sinking fund projects to the agenda. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, supported by Ms. Hines. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show six and zero.
Okay, and then the next one will be resolved at the Board. Amend the agenda as follows, to add item 243.17.1, Board of Education Finance Committee Report informational to the agenda. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cox?
Support.
Supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
The record shows six and zero.
Motion carries. Moving on to item, the next one, resolve that the Board amend that the agenda as follows and add item 246.17.1, to allow the Board to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the collective bargaining agreement according to A.C. of the Open Meetings Act to the agenda. At this time, I'll take a motion.
Moved to accept.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, supported by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show six and zero.
Motion carries. Okay, does anyone need those numbers again? Just because I know I went kind of fast.
What was the first one? Was it 24?
242.17.1, which would be after the Head Start budget. And then 243.17.1, which would be after Mrs. Madell does the Head Start monthly report. And then item number 246.17.1, which will be after review and recommendations of the Board of Education. Okay? Thank you. Moving on to item number 239.17. Dr. Hamala, presentations, please.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Albrecht as he'll provide an update on both the Kensington Lakes Athletic Association and John Gillan High School graduation ceremony.
Thank you, Dr. Hamala, madam president, members of the Board of Education. A year ago, 10 members of the Kensington Lakes Activities Association, Waterford Kettering, Waterford Mott, Wadlake Central, Wadlake Northern, Wadlake Western, Pinckney, South Lyon, South Liones, Milford and Lakeland collaborated together to leave the association. That left 14 remaining schools, Howell, Brighton, Heartland, Plymouth, Canton, Salem, Churchill, Franklin, Stevenson, Novi, Northville, John Glenn, Wayne Memorial and Grand Blank. Because Grand Blank is significantly distant from the other 13, discussions began related to different configurations. For the 2017-18 school calendar, Grand Blank will remain a member of the 14th team conference. Work is being done related to scheduling and strength of schedule is being considered. On Monday, March 6th, principals and athletic directors of the 14 schools met at Novi and considered and accepted four proposals. First, Grand Blank would be removed from the conference in 2018. Second, Belleville will be invited to join as the 14th school and be required to accept an invitation by April 27th. LaPierre will be notified that the league will not consider LaPierre as a member. And then finally, Celine's request to join will be tabled until April 27th, at which time they will either be accepted or denied based upon Belleville's decision.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. Any questions? Item B, please.
Subsequent to the 2016 graduation ceremonies, our high school administrators began to discuss formatting due to the regular imbalance of students on either side of the floor at EMU's convocation center. Discussion was about having students process alphabetically in pairs, equaling both sides of the procession. All students who had earned honors would still wear their honor hoods and cords and process at the front of their class as always. Wayne Memorial students have traditionally worn graduation gowns that are identical for all students. John Glenn, on the other hand, had men wear blue and women wear white. Processing alphabetically would look unusual with white and blue interspersed. So discussion at John Glenn in the fall of 2016 was that all students would wear identical blue gowns. Communication of this proposal was to include staff and students prior to finalizing these plans. Unfortunately, some of that communication broke down. Ms. Kim Szysinski, Assistant Principal, did meet last fall with student leadership group made up of athletic captains. That group, however, did not communicate to the rest of their peers. But the group made no objections at the time. Announcements and e-blasts were gone out as well, but that didn't happen until much later. Unfortunately, staff learned of the proposal from students after it seemed to have been already finalized. Two weeks ago, I and I was placed at John Glenn High School. We worked to communicate much more detail with the staff and students and their families. Mr. Loomis, Assistant Principal, met with senior officers and student council. There were no concerns mentioned from that group. I sent out an e-blast to senior and junior students and families, as well as all staff, indicating a proposed change of the ceremony. We communicated with Herff Jones, the supplier, to determine if there would be any ramifications should we not move forward with the blue gowns for all students. We learned there wouldn't be any ramifications except for timeliness of delivery. I received no responses to my e-blast. There are now approximately 290 gowns ordered for the ceremony, and they are all blue. The principal position has been posted for John Glenn. Once a new principal has been placed, he or she will revisit graduation ceremony protocols and include all stakeholders before planning for 2018.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Albrecht. Any questions or discussion?
All I was going to say is that when John Glenn first opened and first graduating classes that went through, we all wore the same color. The only thing that designated were the hoods and cords to designate who had honors and who did not. It was not the same color as Wayne High, by the way. Wayne High's always worn a darker blue. This was a little bit lighter shade of blue, but it was still in the dark blue range. It's nice to go back. Nostalgia's okay. It wasn't until probably the late '70s, early '80s that it was changed to white. And I know there's been a lot of difficulties. I know as a parent of two graduates from John Glenn, having a white gown, you had to be very careful what you put underneath it because it showed right through. You know, it's not exactly the thickest material on the planet. So, this will help a lot also with what you have to wear underneath. Guys, don't have this issue. It's only women.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number 240.17, citizen comments, agenda items only. Thank you. Moving on to item number 241.17, consent agenda. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Ms. Madell, supported by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show six and zero.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item number 242.17, Head Start Budget. Dr. Hamala?
Yes, thank you very much. Tonight, we're asking you for your approval of the program year 2016 through 2021, year two narrative and budget as presented, and I'm going to share some information with you. We are in a new grant cycle with Wayne County for Head Start. We have a range of different requirements now under the new grant, and one of them is this particular narrative update. So the update on the Head Start program includes their long-range goals and objectives, as well as their program impact. The lengthy report you received includes a section that explains what the goals are, what the objectives are, what the impacts are in four main areas. School readiness, children demonstrating knowledge and skills within the domains that are assessed for early childhood, 100% of staff having opportunities for comprehensive professional development, and parents being developed as the primary educators of their children. You also saw in Section B, the service delivery model, which addresses a number of categories, the needs of our children and families, the service areas, the justification of the proposed funded enrollment and program options, centers and facilities, recruitment and selection, transportation, educational services, health, family services and social services, transition and coordination. Section C describes the high scope curriculum and the various assessments that we use at the preschool level. And yes, we do have preschool assessments. Section D deals with the parent, the family and community engagement and the requirements there. And Section E, governance, organizational and management structure, as well as our ongoing oversight and record keeping that we must keep. And last of all, Section 2 is the budget and the budget justifying narrative. Funds for Head Start include PA 22 funds of $1.8 million, PA 20 funds of approximately $9,000 that are just used for professional development. And then total federal shares are just over 1.84 million, and the non-federal shares are 537,718, or 29% of the Head Start allocation. So if I could have approval of that, we would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion. I move.
Moved by Mrs. Madell.
Support.
Supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show six and zero.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number 242.17.1, sinking fund projects.
Thank you, President Walker. Before I start, the memo that was sent out to you that you have on your desk actually has a couple adjustments. In the second paragraph, when it talks about projects are Stevenson, first line, Stevenson and Boiler Room updates along with Wildwood Kitchen remodel. So cross out Elliott. We're not doing anything at Elliott. And then the second line is bid package 5B attached contains Stevenson Parking Lot Site Work and Franklin Bus Curb Cut. Some adjustments to your memo there. Okay, on to the actual recommendation. Tonight, I'm requesting approval to award summer 2017 construction projects based on the lowest responsible bids as determined from the bids received as outlined in the memo dated March 13th, 2017, to Dr. Hamala and the Board Trustees for bid packets 5A and 5B. Bid packet 5A is for a total of $1,687,549. It includes the Boiler Room updates to Stevenson and Adams and kitchen remodels at Wildwood and Elliott. Bid package 5B is for $395.43, and that's for Stevenson Parking Lot and the Franklin Bus Curb Cut. This information was reviewed and discussed with the Board's Finance Committee this morning.
So on 5A, we're adding Elliott?
No, you're taking out Elliott.
Okay, so I've got...
In the memo, you're taking out Elliott. We're not doing anything to Elliott.
Okay.
And you're taking out Walker.
All right.
Yeah.
You're all set?
Yes, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. So, at this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Buckaloo, supported by Mr. Cox.
Any discussion?
Just one point.
Okay.
The changes that we made to the memo have no effect at all on the dollar amounts in the bids?
No, they don't. They were in the initial bid. There were alternate projects, and we decided not to go forward.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question, too, with the parking lot. Now, I know they did some restructuring with the way Stevenson...
Yes, Stevenson.
The way they come around. Are they expanding it, or what?
No, we're actually just resurfacing it.
Okay.
Basically, because it's getting pretty beat up.
Anyone else? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madell?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show six and zero.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number 243.17, Head Start Monthly Report.
Ms. Madell?
As required by federal law, the Board of Trustees received a copy of the monthly expense report for the Head Start program located over at Stottlemyre. We are at full capacity attendance, and we always keep a list of potential students. We need to have 10 students on that list, and they go through the process of being evaluated and make sure that they qualify for the program and meet all the criteria so that when we drop a student, we've got one to quickly put in its place and move on. 10% of our students need to have special needs, so they are very careful to make sure that we do meet all of the criteria for our enrollment. Lots of things happening. It's March, March is reading month, so they are also doing literacy activities over at Stottlemyre, and they're also planning for the end of the school year when they have their field day. So, a lot of things in the works. They're still looking for a fatherhood initiative worker to help out. Somebody on the staff right now is covering that, but it's listed on our website with our other job listings. So if anybody's interested in being the fatherhood person over there, apply. We could use you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Madell. Moving on to item number 243.17.1, Board of Education Finance Committee Reports.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, thank you. Minutes of the Finance Subcommittee meeting of March 13th, 2017, that was held this morning at 11:00 AM and finished up a little bit before noon. Members present from the committee were myself, David Cox and Dr. Weaver. Other staff members were Michelle Hamala, David Kalmeier, Jim Larson Scheidler, Tony Spiezak, and from TMP, Mr. Bill Weinrock. No one was absent. Discussion took place regarding the proposed summer 2017 sinking fund and food service fund projects contained within bid packages 5A and 5B. Bid package 5A includes boiler room upgrades at Stevenson Middle School and Adams Upper Elementary School, and kitchen upgrades at Wildwood Elementary School. The total cost of these projects is $1,687,549. Bid package 5B includes paving at Stevenson Middle School and Franklin Middle School. The cost of these projects is $395,043. Tony Spiezak and Bill Weinrock shared the timelines and details of both bid projects. They also addressed the urgency of board approval due to the lengthy lead times for delivery of key materials for these projects. Jim Larson Scheidler shared the timeline of the final debt service payments for the district's 1998 bond issue. Meeting was adjourned at 11:45 AM. If there are any questions regarding these minutes, please feel free to contact Mr. Larson Scheidler.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Moving on to item number 244.17, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Hamala?
Yes, good evening, and thank you, President Walker. I'd like to share a couple of items with the Board this evening. First, we had the pleasure and privilege of hosting approximately 40 state legislators and representatives from educational institutions and various businesses at William D. Ford Career Technical Center on Friday, March 10th. This event was set up to advocate for CTE, Career and Tech Ed, and the needs we have to ensure all students who want to be a part of Career and Tech Ed have the opportunity to attend our center or one like it in their locale. We provided all of our guests with a tour, a wonderful lunch prepared by our students in the Culinary Arts Program, and we shared the importance of flexibility, funding and fanfare for Career and Tech Ed. Flexibility refers to the flexibility we need in regard to the Michigan Merit Curriculum and the various laws that create silos and separate entities as opposed to a regional and coherent system of CTE options. Funding refers to the fact that CTE is an option that requires additional funding due to the capital infrastructure, supplies and unique experiences we provide to our students so they're career and college ready. Fanfare refers to the message that must promote CTE as a viable, positive and rigorous option that is available to students for those who want to go to college and those who want to go immediately into the workforce or both. I was pleased with our audience's receptivity to the challenges and some of our proposed solutions. I will be taking the time to share some of these same thoughts in Lansing tomorrow before the Education Appropriations Committee, and I would like to thank Stephen Kay, all of the staff and the students of Career Tech, as they did us very proud once again. Second, congratulations to our boys and girls basketball teams. Wayne Memorial's boys and girls teams extended their seasons into the district and regional semifinals. John Glenn Boys Basketball Team is still going strong, and we wish them well as they take on the challenge of the regional Class A semifinals tonight at Fortson High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hamala. Moving on to item number 245.17, Citizen Comments, Non-Agenda Items.
Okay. Seeing no one. Moving on to item number 246.17.17, Review and Recommendations, Board of Education. We'll start with Dr. Weaver.
Thank you. Just want to echo the congratulations. John Glenn is still involved in the men's basketball tournament. Just wanted to shout out to the Wayne, men of Wayne, who succumbed to Romulus 71 to 65, but they gave a valiant effort, and it's a very young team, so I'm looking forward to them coming back next year. That concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mr. Cox?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes. I guess I should start by saying welcome to springtime in Michigan. Mrs. Madell and I had the pleasure of attending a coffee with the legislators this morning before the Finance Committee meeting, and I happened to pick up a copy of the Marketplace, which I see we have copies of out in the foyer. Marketplace is kind of a place for local businesses to advertise, but as I was going through it, I saw a number of things that caught my eye, and I jotted them down. I'd just like to tick them off. One of them was, they mentioned Governor Snyder's visit here to the Ford Career Tech Building. They also gave us a shout out on the Earl Schubagian Spelling Bee, on the ethics team from John Glenn, excuse me, from Wayne Memorial. Excuse me, please. The herd, and the fact that they're going to be competing in a national competition later this year. They also announced for us the kindergarten roundup, which is going to be the 21st of March, something very, very important to all of us here. And finally, they gave a shout out to the Red Wings alumni versus the Wild Wings, and unfortunately, they did not give any credit to the star player for the Wild Wings, Dr. Hamala.
Well, that remains to be seen.
My thanks to Vinnie for showing up and helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance, and that should do it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Ms. Hines?
I was fortunate to go to the Leader and Me at Ensign with Dr. Hamala, and that's one of my favorite programs because I see the responsibility of the children. They're so excited about showing their binders and how you see them increase, like their reading, attendance, their job performance. So I love that program. They're having a Spring Festival Saturday the 18th at Jefferson Barnes. It's for the children in the community from 12 to 2 o'clock PM, and it's for reading, literacy and some school supplies. So if any children are interested to go to Jefferson Barnes Spring Festival Saturday, March the 18th from 12 to 2, definitely stop in because that's a really nice community center. I'm actually hosting a Wayne County Easter Fest for the children of Wayne Westland Community, and it's going to be April the 11th. It's on a Tuesday at the Wayne Fort Civic League, and it's for the kids, but sometimes they don't have a lot of money for Easter, so we're going to have like an Easter bunny, games, prizes, baskets, something. You know, I want to bring more families and really get them activated into our school system. And then we're also having a Kiwanis meeting, March the 23rd, and what we want to do is get the community getting involved, because we need mentors, more tutoring, because even though we have like different programs, we want to bring, you know, more help with our children in the community as well. And they do a lot of scholarships and different programs, so I want to get more scholarship money for our kids, other opportunities as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Madell?
Thank you. Like Mr. Buckaloo said, we got a chance to go to coffee with the legislators, where we also advocate for our school district and our great programs that we have to offer here. People need to know what good things are going on. And there was a hearty discussion about community activity that has been going on, some of it not as legal as the police department would hope, but we did remind them that we do have a method for our students to anonymously report things that are of concern to them. And...
and let the, uh, people sitting around the table know that this is held in confidentiality, but it gives us a chance to deal with issues before they become big problems. And it's okay to say program, uh, for the kids. So if they weren't aware of it, they are aware now that we have this option for our students. And we also talked about some other things that we have available to, uh, our students that may not be offered in other school districts. And one of the things that came up last month was from a young lady who was attending Central, and she did not attend our school district. She, uh, came from another school district that is adjacent to us. And talking about college debt and preparing students ahead of time while they're still in high school to understand finances better. And it sparked, uh, an interest in what we do here for our students that not only do our counselors and staff attempt to get them good financing, scholarships, uh, going into college, but we also try to show them, uh, better path once they are in college to avoid a lot of that student debt when they come out of, that they have to take the best job that pays the, the, the most amount of money because they're, want to be out of debt in a short amount of time, which doesn't always happen. So it gives us a chance to showcase what we have to offer our kids. One of the things that I've been attending for the last few years has been, um, a music program that they have for both high schools at, um, Wayne High. And each year, Dr. Pasquale comes from the U of M over to, uh, critique and offer advice to help them with their program. And he deals with the kids in orchestra and band, symphonic band, so that, uh, the kids have a little bit extra, uh, support, advice before they go off to competitions and that. So unfortunately, I didn't see it on the calendar, so I missed it because that's like a whole day of sitting at Stockmyre listening to the music and listening, uh, to the progression from one group of, uh, music students to the next. And knowing that, uh, both high schools do participate in this, it's really worth the time and effort that goes into it for them to learn. So I'm sorry I missed it this year because I really enjoyed that. We have our spring musicals coming, both John Glenn and Wayne High. So need to get on the websites and figure out how to get tickets for your kids. Good family fun for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Medel. So as usual, by the time it gets to me, everything has been said. But I would like to share and send out, uh, congratulations to my husband. And I, I, the way I'll tie this in is because we have had a relationship with, um, Local Nine Hundred in the past. They have did donations and have, uh, did some things for our children. So I would like to congratulate my husband on being the new president-elect of Local Nine Hundred. I'm so proud of him, and, uh.
Does that mean we can get more support from him?
I'm not going to say all that, but I do want to say congratulations to him, and, um, I, I wish you the best of luck,